Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up is called Public Items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. Okay, so I do have a sign-up sheet, which has a lot of people on it, and I will just call your names in the order that you signed up. And assuming that there may be somebody that didn't know about this at the end, we'll give you a chance to come forward at that time. But the first person up would be Chris Carnegie. If you could come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, and tell us what you'd like to speak to us about this evening.
A lot of things now.
Yeah, five minutes.
Yeah, my name's Chris Carnegie. I live at 6,600 Maston Drive. The reason a few of us were here today is to discuss the, our electricity with Evergy Electric. We are constantly losing power because our back fence is, if I call 911, I get Miriam and Shawnee show up. Our back fence, you hop it, that's Shawnee. Well, there's a utility easement that goes right down the fence, all the way down, pretty much to Johnson Drive, I mean Shawnee Mission Parkway, and there's hedge trees there. Well, they take out the power lines. They take out the boxes. They take whatever. And so, we lose power for days at a time. So, we would like to see about getting our lines put underground, I mean, just that section, whatever, because I don't think it's our whole neighborhood, but it is down that line, straight down 67th till it starts turning. And so, I know that Aberfast Cable, they've got their cables underground, so it's already, there's already, it was already dug up just to put in the lines for the cable, so I would think they could probably put the electric lines parallel. And so, that's with that, and I know it's, people are already filing insurance claims because they've lost food in freezers. We've got elderly people there that need their oxygen, that have, you know, different type of equipment that they need to survive. And so, it's not just food and freezers, it's everything. So, that's for that. And then, I just found out a lady on our corner is running a B&amp;B. I didn't even know about that one. And the, you know how we have these beautiful black lights now on our street corners and stuff? She painted it blue, like a bright blue, like your nameplates. It's painted blue now, instead of black. So, who do we talk to about addressing the B&amp;B right there on the corner? Cars get parked and they block traffic. Because people, we just pull right in off of 67th, and there's cars parked on both sides now. And that's a traffic hazard.
Okay. Well, I think there's been several different departments probably on those issues itself. One would be Director Comiskey and Director Dyer for the, or B&amp;B, and our police department for any type of parking violations itself. They have all heard what your concerns are, and you can reach out to each of those departments in the event that, you know, try to find out what they were able to find out. But give us some time to investigate.
Okay.
Okay.
So, when can we expect our electric underground?
We'll get back to you on that.
Before winter again?
We'll get back to you.
No, it's just the hedge trees, I think, is what is knocking everything out.
It seems like we just like to cut those off, but thank you. If you have anything else, I'll call the next person up. Okay. Jo Dean Coleman. Okay. And again, your name and your address for the record, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Jo Dean Coleman, and I am Rita Coleman's daughter. I am her durable power of attorney. She lives at 6,618 Maston, and Miriam, Kansas is the same neighborhood the woman who just spoke with. The power outages that have happened in that lane, they, as far as West Vernon Place is concerned, they affect about 20-some homes on that lined street that goes down, that's Maston Drive. I think they also may hit Sherwood Forest that's behind them, but I don't know. I just, I just talked to the neighbors that were in the area. This has been happening since the 80s, but the frequency has elevated, so it's happening more and more often. My mother, who lived in the home, was quite elderly. When the power went out, she would lose phone service. So, we would try and call her, and we didn't know if she was okay, what was happening. So, she couldn't call out to say, "We're fine," and she was too old to understand how to use a mobile phone. So, we were driving in in really bad weather to try and make sure she was okay. We finally had to do something drastic in order to make sure that she would have power all the time, and we wouldn't be driving all the time to take care of her. I'm not sure what the cause is, whether it's the overhead lines, the trees are causing it, whether there's, you know, a problem with the transformer that's in that area that constantly goes out, or what is the cause? Because I don't do that. But it would be interesting to know who it is that we need to speak with, because I've called Evergy, and I can't get any response from that. I've talked to Shawnee, I've talked to Miriam, and as far as the easements concerned, they're not really sure who's responsible for that area back there, from what I understand. So, I'm assuming the electric company should go through and cut through that and make sure that the overhead lines aren't a problem. I know that this row of houses can look across the street and see all their neighbors across the street have power because it's all underground, but their lines are all above ground. So, I kind of think that, living in Johnson County and paying the proper tax, property taxes we all do, would be a good service to have electricity when we expect to have it, especially in bad weather, when we need it. I know this has happened a lot more frequently of late because ADT is now part of the system that's on my mother's home, so it comes to my phone and lets me know, "Hey, the power's down, we're going on battery backup," and then when it comes back on. So, and I'm constantly resetting clocks throughout the house. So, it's happened quite a bit in the last year or so. When it comes to, you know, selling your home and knowing what the appreciation is on it, there's a certain amount of, the right thing to do is to let people know that when they're buying your home, you may not always have power. And because it's a small area of homes, there's not a lot of them that go out, they're the very last ones to get power restored, because they're not making the big enough noise to say, "Hey, my power's out, so Evergy's not going to go there." They don't live near a supermarket, so that's not helping them. But there are several neighbors that I've talked to that have generators, and they've had to go out and purchase these. These things are not cheap, and for them to feel like they have to do that in order to have power consistently is, is an issue, I feel. The only other thing I can say is I know that this year, because of the ADT systems, I can say for sure that it was out in May for a couple days, it was out in July for a day, and it was out in August for 12 hours. And this isn't even bad weather. And as our environment changes, how much more are we going to see this this winter? And how bad is that going to be? So, if we could find somebody to talk to, if you guys can help us find who we should reach out to to help this situation, if it is just trees, hey, that could be an easy fix, right? So, I just hope that you guys can kind of lead us in the right direction, or help us out, find a way to get this problem fixed in this little subset of people in their, in your community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Coleman. And it looks like the next person up would be Robin Nelson. Okay. And for the record, please give your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Robin Nelson. I live at 6,636 Maston, right at the entrance, on the left. I have lived there for about five years. I've lived several places all over the country, grew up a military brat, so I am familiar with outages, but this is the most I've ever seen in any housing I've lived in. It's difficult, as she said, with food spoilages, you know. I've made multiple claims in the last few years. My insurance is getting a little sick of me. The last one, I believe, was after Labor Day, because my brother had, my roommate brother had just filled up the fridge, and he was not very happy with me when we had to dump the whole thing out again. I have looked into generators, both solar and gas, but it's a little overwhelming, so I'd rather not do that. I do work from home as an attorney, so that makes it very difficult as well, because typically when our power does go out, it's out for three days, four days. We're typically in the last group to get fixed. It's always, you know, you'll look on the Evergy website, and it says 80% of people have got their power back, 90% of the people, and it's always just our little neighborhood. So, I think the main issues, we know that power goes out, we know we live in a neighborhood full of mature trees, but it's more, it's the frequency and the length of time that we are without power, that people are looking into hotel rooms during the heat, you know, things like that. So, I think they covered most of it. I just wanted to add my two cents, too.
Appreciate it, thank you. Next person up would be Raymond Owen. Please give your name and address for the record, sir.
Yeah, my name, my name is Raymond Owen. I'm, I live with my parents off and on when they need help at 6,500 Maston Drive. David and Adaloo Owen, they're, they're both in their late 80s now, so they, they need help every now and then, and I wrote down, I just wanted to add a few things when they tell me. They, I know the power outage, this is about the power outages, the same one that we've been talking about, from, it's normally from 67th and Maston, there's, there's a line going down the easement, then it goes down the hill at 65th Street to the east. And I, usually when you look on the Evergy outage map, I get a, get an alert when the outages happen. There's a triangle, so you've got at least 25 to 30 homes in West Vernon Place that, that go down, you know, all the time. That's the same ones, but there's also back in Sherwood Forest, probably 20 homes. Then I think there's at least 20 to 25 that's in Shawnee, because Shawnee's right up next to that area. So, it's usually, if you look on the outage map, it's a triangle of about 75 homes. But I, I just wanted to add for the record, because this didn't used to happen, it's just been in the last year where the, where the outages have dramatically increased. It used to be, sure, there might have been one a year, maybe two, depending on what kind of storms that came through, but I have, I have outages that my parents had told me, and a few times I've been there, when, when they've been out. It was July 14th of '23, that was over two days, two to, two to three days. May 25th of this year was almost two days. Then it was again on June 26th for about two hours, July 15th for about two hours, July 31st for about 20 hours, then on August 9th, that was thankfully only a minute. But if I'm staying there, and I can hear the howling wind when I'm up in my room, in my bedroom that I've stayed in sometimes on the computer, I, it's like, oh, here comes the power outage, the, the winds are coming, and who knows what's happening? I haven't been able to get through to Evergy or to get a good response on, with six outages in one year, I would have thought they would have, that would have raised an alarm with Evergy with their software to look at all their outages, to come and either trim those trees, because my parents have spent thousands back there on that hedge row in their yard, but it, it doesn't do any good for them to do it unless the whole line has been trimmed out, because if just one, if, I don't think theirs is the problem, because it's usually either closer to 67th, or it's over in Sherwood Forest, and I don't know if a limb is coming down on the lines, knocking out a transformer, but it has to be more than one transformer. I can't believe it would, one transformer would bring down that same 75 homes, you know, six times in one year. So, there seems to be something else going on, but I don't know what it is, and, but there's, this has been just a dramatic increase in the outages. Now, three of these storms, three of these outages were storms. These were the two-day, the day, the two-days, three-days. You know, you can, those are pretty big storms, and for some reason, the wind just goes right through West Vernon Place. I don't know why, but it, it, it does something. We don't know what it is, if it's tree limbs coming down. It would be nice to have something done, I think, probably getting it underground. That's the other thing that's, that's annoying in that neighborhood. See, there's, there's a circle in the neighborhood, the interior homes, their power is underground. So, we'll be looking out our window across the street, their power's never out. We're out six times in one year. So, it's, it's kind of annoying. I wish, obviously, when they built the neighborhood, I wish they'd have put it all underground, but they didn't do that, and that's really all I can think of. I mean, it's, it is just, it's a major annoyance when it's this many times, because I had to go out and buy them some coolers, get ice, get dry ice to try to save, because it's happened at least once where they've gone to Costco the day before, and bam, the power goes out the next day, and it's, it's, it's a pain, you know, having to go back and get ice multiple times to, to wait for the power to come back on. You hope, now, we were, you know, the worst off, some, everybody, you know, somebody has to be the last to get their power back on. You know, somebody's going to be last, and you just don't know when you're going to be last, and you just hope you're not always last.
Yeah, we understand, Mr. Owen, and that noise means you're five minutes up, sir. Thank you, though. Okay, and I have, I believe it's Rick, maybe Jase? You guys, I'm not sure about the, will you give us your name and, and address for the record, sir?
Yes, I can scribble. Uh, Rick Jaso, 6612 Maston.
Thanks, sir.
And everyone else has pretty much said, but I, I believe, but I don't know necessarily what the problem is. It's my, always been my belief is that we have too many houses on one transformer, because it blows every time there's a problem. And it's always a problem with food, always have to throw stuff out. I've called Evergy, I've been on the phone many times with them, and they always say, "Well, yeah, your house goes out a lot," but they say, "It's always a different problem." Well, I don't, the, the main problem is, my belief is there's too many houses, because it blows every time there's a problem, anywhere in the city, if there's a draw on the power, our power goes out. And because we have no businesses, like has already been said, we're always last on the list, because there's only, as was said, like 75 houses involved. And those houses are split between Shawnee and Miriam, so it's hard to know if that really affects why this is a continuing problem, but just to reiterate, it has happened more frequently, and I just want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaso. Okay, so is there anyone else that would like to address not only this issue, but any issue before the public this evening, or from the PMU to our council concerning public items?
And one more thing, sorry. I just wanted to go back to the last meeting I came in, we were talking about sidewalks and resale-ability of your house, and being able to have electricity is a lot more important for me selling my house than a sidewalk. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I have one question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Robin Nelson again. I just had a quick question. Who would I address if I have a neighbor who doesn't live in their house and lets their backyard grow over my fence and create an issue in my yard? There's becoming trees now. It started as bushes.
I think that'd be our Community Development Director, Dyer, would probably be the person you need to contact.
Perfect.
He's here and has heard your comments, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'm going to close out the public items in this evening so far, and move on to our next item, which is Consent Agenda. And the Consent Agenda, all items listed under this heading are considered to be routine by the City Council, may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda separately. Would we have three items this evening on the Consent Agenda? Does any council member wish to have any of those items removed? I see no one raising their hand or acknowledging that. I would entertain a motion then for those.
This way.
Oh, Mr. Silvers, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that the council approve Consent Agenda items number one through three.
Okay, we have a motion, I have a second. Okay, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, your second.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion kept. Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up this evening is the mayor's report, and one of the things I have on that is a proclamation, and I always love getting to read our proclamations. This particular one has some special importance to me, but, and I will just read it, so you know why, possibly. Whereas, first responders, including firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians, 9/11 dispatchers, and paramedics stand on the front line, selflessly serving and protecting the city of Miriam and our community in times of crisis. And whereas, first responders swiftly and courageously respond to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others, whether in natural disasters, accidents, medical emergencies, or public health and safety threats. And whereas, as we mark the sixth anniversary of the National First Responders' Day, we honor and celebrate the brave women and men who put themselves in harm's way to keep our community safe, and we honor the families of these first responders. And whereas, today and every day, we thank our first responders for their measurable service, and we remember the first responders who lost their lives running towards danger to protect others. Now, therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Miriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 28, 2024, as National First Responders' Day. I urge all residents to pay tribute to our first responders and recognize the many contributions they make to protect our health and safety and advance the quality of life for all. I proclaim this 20th day of October, 2024. Bob Pape, Mayor. Now, I assume, am I giving this proclamation to the chiefs, or one chief, since we only have one, and, are we just keeping it? Just keep it, okay. Don't want to cut out the police or the fire or EMS or anybody else, but know that you've got a proclamation, and I would entertain, or I would ask that everybody give them a round of applause for all the people. Thank you. Okay, other items on the mayor's report, I always like to give a little brief things of what's happening between the council members and myself over the last two weeks. I and several council members join city employees in making a 75-year video that will be utilized next year as we celebrate our 75th anniversary on Becoming a City. I look forward to seeing that. I and council member met with Mr. Engel, developed tonight's agenda. I attended the Northeast Chamber of Commerce Leadership Meet and Greet. We are sending two employees to this valuable leadership training in the upcoming class. I and several council members and staff attended the Single Holler Work Group Session. We anticipate this group will meet at least three times to discuss pros and cons of single holler and develop an RFP for that. Several council members attended the Pink Nick Employee Luncheon as a fundraiser kickoff for the breast cancer. A council member, several staff member, attended the Taco and Tures at the Miriam Grand Station, as you hopefully all know where that's located, but the East Building now has occupants in it, for those of you that might not know that. A council member, several staff, attended the First Suburbs Coalition Meeting. A group of council members attended and helped out at the Halloween Happenings Event. A council member attended the Antioch Hills Block Party. I attended the Orchid Society of Greater Kansas City Conference and Orchid Cell at the Miriam Community Center. This group, ironically, has been in existence for 75 years as well, and they have classes down there on a monthly basis. If you want to learn more about orchids, please check them out. They have a website. I attended a block party at Vernon Place, got to talk to many families who expressed their excitement of everything that's going on over at Miriam Grand Station, given the update. And the Chamber of Commerce, this is just an upcoming event for, this is for the council, but has announced, or actually for the public as well, has announced that the State of Cities Address will be January 22, 2025, next year, and I mentioned it so you can get that on your calendars now, so, okay. And that's all I have. I don't know if I missed anything, council members and stuff that's gone on, but hopefully that covers kind of the stuff that's been going on in the city itself. All right. Next items up are council items, and the first one is interviews and election award for council member. That's, as most of you, at least I know there's five people that know, but David Neal was our empty seat down there, has resigned, and he's a ward for council member, and so we sent out, you know, information to try to solicit people that were interested. We had five applicants that have come forward this evening, and we're going to interview those individuals, and somebody's going to be selected by our council. So, I think I will probably call up the first person, and the reason you're coming up in this order is because of your alphabetical names, so that's how they were chosen. First one up being John Beaver. Sir, if you could come forward and give your name and, and address, and then I have a few questions for you.
My name is Jonathan Beaver. I live at 6306 Sherwood Lane in Miriam, Kansas.
Thank you, Mr. Beaver. Okay, first question for you this evening is, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city in the next two years?
Well, I, your city's kind of unique, because I've lived in other cities, and because of your, the demographics and the amount of industry you have here, I think it's amazing that you have the revenue stream that you need to grow your city. So, I don't, I don't see a great many problems, but I would say that just keeping the, the residents and the businesses would probably be a concern, because when you have too much business, sometimes the residents don't understand that business kind of helps with the tax base and all that kind of stuff, so I think that's very important. And like I said, just, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Second question is, what skills or talents would you bring to the city council?
I've ran several successful small businesses in lawn and landscape, and I have a beaver timber, and so I have a great many relationships in the Kansas City area. Been doing this for 40 years, so I think that that would be an asset, just having knowledge of what you need to do in a city-type environment. And running a business is super important as far as being, having relationships with employees and being able to communicate with people and feel comfortable doing that.
Okay, thank you, sir. And our last question this evening for you is, do you have any closing comments for the city council to consider?
I was born and raised in Miriam, Kansas. I went to the Miriam Christian Church. I was in Boy Scouts here, went up to Camp Nash in, in Bonner, went to Crestview Shawnee Mission North, and so I had lived in other places in Kansas City, and I'm back in Miriam, and I thought that that would, it would be an important part to my continuing. I'm going to retire, hopefully, in the next year or two, that I could help some other people out. That's it.
Okay, well, thank you for putting the application in, and we'll see how it turns out this evening. Okay, next person up that I'm going to call is Mr. Cosmeyer. Come forward, sir, give your name and address for the record, and then I'll ask you the questions.
Yep, Ruben Cosmeyer, 5800 Hadley.
Thank you, sir. Question one, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city in the next two years?
Yeah, so I think, you know, like Jonathan said, Miriam's in a great place right now. The city's finances are strong, and we, as residents, are getting a lot of bang for our buck. And the city staff and leadership clearly care about the community and are always trying to improve the quality of life in our, in our little corner of Johnson County. So, one of Miriam's great strengths is its accessibility to the rest of the nation, to the rest of the metro, with a great highway access, but those highways also divide the city in such a way that it makes it really difficult for pedestrians to safely and easily access all parts of the city. People west of I-35 have a difficult time getting to places like City Hall, the community center, or the library without having to drive, even though distances aren't that far. And then those of us on the east side of I-35 aren't able to enjoy the Turkey Creek Trail or the downtown events and businesses quite as easily as we'd like. And then when the rest of Miriam Grand Station opens up, Shawnee Mission Parkway will remain a hazard as well. We'll sometimes bike or walk to downtown Shawnee, but it can be a pain crossing the highway, the railroad tracks, and then not all the intersections are easy to cross. And I think Miriam can and should work to continually improve pedestrian access across all of these major thoroughfares and continue networking our paths and trails across the, across the region. across the region.
Thank you, sir. Question two, what skills or talents would you bring to the city council?
Yeah, so I like to look to our neighbors for inspiration of what, of what can be. You know, downtown Marion, or downtown Mission and downtown Shawnee have experienced huge increases in activity since I've lived here. And Merriam's downtown is handicapped by Turkey Creek, as, as you all know. So whatever, whatever we want to do in our downtown area needs to keep the possibility of potential flooding in mind. The Merriam City Council will need to responsibly manage both expectations and any incentives to make sure that any further development of downtown is done both safely and responsibly. So in my day job, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the water resources field and a certified floodplain manager. I lead a team of eleven engineers developing flood studies for FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program, analyzing streams and urban environments and evaluating different mitigation strategies. I know that the city has been acquiring properties within the floodplain in anticipation of future U.S. Army Corps of Engineers mitigation projects. And my experience and viewpoint as a floodplain manager and hydraulic modeler would put one more person with that knowledge and experience on Merriam's side while we work with federal and state agencies.
Okay, thank you, sir. And question number three is, do you have any closing comments for the city council to consider?
Yeah, so like many of you, I share the vision that local government can be both a positive and a proactive presence in the life of its residents. I've been a member of the Merriam Planning Commission since two thousand seventeen, and so I've also been able to be fortunate enough to be part of some of the positive changes that we've seen over the last decade. That also means that I know that there's only so much we can do as local government. You know, we don't have our own grocery store. Kmart sat vacant for quite a while before someone was able to do anything with it. But the Merriam City Council was able to be, you know, both ambitious and cautious, able to avoid falling into the traps of wasting money on incentive packages that don't really go anywhere. So I've lived here in Ward Four since two thousand twelve, but that seems like a pretty common story, actually. Merriam seems to have a lot of people who want to stick around for a long time. And I want to join you in keeping Merriam a place that people want to move to, want to live in, want to visit, and I want to help Merriam live up to its motto of just right.
Thank you, sir. All right. Our next person up would be Mr. Crone. Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and then I'll give you the questions.
Billy Crone, six-six-three-three Wed Street.
Okay, sir. Question one, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city in the next two years?
Well, I think there's a lot of important issues. We're going to see construction beginning on I thirty-five, the Shawnee Mission Parkway Corridor. That should probably, probably will end up getting a double diamond, from what I've heard. There may be a roundabout going in at sixty-seventh with the, with that whole project to upgrade the transportation corridor on I thirty-five. That's going to change the face of Merriam very visibly. Single hauler, I think is likely to pass and to come into effect in the next two years. I have not particularly liked that myself, but I have spoken on behalf of neighbors who did in this very podium, and I think that's definitely the majority opinion. So I think it's probably going to happen. That will change every home in Merriam. We will all see that change. But the big one is the people of Merriam. This city is about to grow by about three hundred housing units when Merriam Grand Station comes online. I think they're going to move in probably this, well, in the next six to eight, six to eight months, if I had to guess, looking at the construction going along. So we're going to have a lot of new residents, residents in Merriam but also in Ward Four. And I look forward to greeting them with Stacy. Hopefully, they will have some sort of quarterly or monthly new resident meetings as that goes online and meeting the people welcoming to our city.
Okay, sir, thank you. Question two, what skills or talents would you bring to the city council?
In a word, dedication. Anyone can say they are detail-oriented, but I have walked that walk. I have been here for nearly nine years. I sat in that chair right over there, the second one in the second row, and I watched so much go on in this room since two thousand fifteen, when I moved to Merriam. Took a, took a break from this room for about a year and a half, of course, when COVID hit, and we zoomed in, did all those wonderful online meetings. But I've been consistently attending this council, paying attention. I know this council. I have watched many of you take your oaths of office at this podium just a few feet away. I have watched others come and go, but I remain many years on. I know this city. I know the boards, the commissions, the staff. This is my home.
Okay, thank you, sir. And the final question is, do you have any closing comments for the city council to consider?
Yes. We have five good candidates tonight. I've, I've met many of them. I've read their applications. I got to have a couple of good conversations this evening. We are blessed to live in a city and a ward with so much interest in civic participation, and I hope it continues past tonight for every one of us, regardless of who you choose to serve on council. There's been a lot of vacancies to fill recently on Merriam's commissions and boards, from Parks Board to Art to Planning Commission. We need more participation, and I'm glad we have it. I can join council today, myself, without forming any vacancies in my wake. I have been on plenty of boards in the past, but at this time, I am not on one. I'm active in other ways. I volunteer in various things, but I am ready today. You know me. You know I will read, I will listen, I will pay attention, I will participate, I will take notes. I took notes today from the neighbors in my ward, by the way, who came in to speak and share their thoughts on how their community is faring in these storms. Joe Dean, Robin, Raymond, Rick, Chris, thank you. David Neal left big shoes to fill, and I never wanted to replace David. I think he was a great treasure to this council, and it would be a great honor to me to be able to take seriously, an honor I would take seriously, to carry the torch that he lit seven years ago, the torch of bringing new diverse viewpoints to this council and representing the neighbors who have trusted me to do this for years. I am Billy Crone. I am ready to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Crone. Okay. The next person up would be Nita Dillon. Nita Dillon, come forward. If you'd give your name and address for the record, and then I'll ask you the questions.
All right. Nita Dillon, eighty-five sixteen Johnson Drive.
Okay. First question is, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city in the next two years?
I feel that housing's actually going to be an important issue. Our city is definitely locked in. We don't have room to grow out, but we're getting more people and growing up with some new kind of mixed housing. I've watched our neighboring cities in Mission and Shawnee kind of have some heated discussions about condos and apartments and how to make room for all of those people. But I do think keeping it affordable is important. We have a lot of residents that are elderly on fixed income, and we've been blessed to have this grant to kind of help them maintain their homes, to keep them looking nice and helping with resale value. I think that's going to continue to be an issue. Like the others that have spoke tonight, we talked about Airbnbs. I do have concerns about homes that are coming to market and being bought by out-of-state corporations, rented as Airbnbs. We have one right down our street that is corporate-assisted living, I believe, kind of a newer thing on our street. I think important to keep the small-town feel while allowing for the growth. And I think we are definitely going to have to address that grocery store issue. I live down the street, as many of you guys know, Sam, and he used to bring that up a lot, and I continue to hear residents kind of concerned about that. But really, I think the primary is going to be housing with population growth.
Thank you. And question two, what skills or talents would you bring to the city council?
So I work as a family physician, and it may be hard to kind of relate, how does that have anything to do with representing the community here? But as a physician, I can't do my job well if I don't develop relationships and rapport with my patients. And they may walk in the door with their goals, and of course, I walk in with my own goals that I want to achieve with them. But I can't do my job if I don't listen to their concerns and what they want. It's obvious there's a lot of very qualified applicants. We're all ready to serve our community. A lot of us have some deep history here. I have the unique experience of working with Merriam Fire Department, working with EMS in Johnson County. I grew up in Johnson County, actually, in Overland Park. When I was first interested in working with the fire department, I called around. I called Overland Park, Olathe, Merriam, just to see, hey, how do I get, how do I get involved? And a firefighter at Merriam at the time said, hey, what are you doing right now? Coming up. And I was like, are you kidding? There's no process? He was like, no, Friday night, come on, I'll show you around. And that really just kind of embodies what the community here is like. And I think that relationship is what makes us keep that small-town feel. I think politically, there's been a lot of divisiveness, and I think just getting that family-oriented, just the loving community we have here is important. So I'm grounded, I have established long-term relationships, meaningful conversations with those with differing opinions. I think that's important for someone who's going to be on city council. And I appreciate the opportunity to dialogue with somebody who's got maybe a different opinion than I do. I think those skills are all important.
Okay, all right. Final question is, do you have any closing comments for the city council to consider?
Sure. When we first bought our home in Merriam, we lived in an old stone house on Johnson Drive I was just in love with as a kid and thought, if that ever comes up for sale, I really want to move there. It had three full-price offers in twenty-four hours over Easter weekend. And the couple that lived there have been there for fifty years, and they invited us up to interview, kind of much like this, you know, why are you good for our neighborhood? And what do you do? Tell us about yourselves. So we sat in their living room, and we had lemonade, and we got kind of the third-degree questions, and we learned all about the neighbors, and they decided that we were the right fit for this, for this neighborhood. And before we knew it, our names and phone number were on the local phone list that was passed to everybody on the street. We were receiving phone calls, welcome to the neighborhood. I love that. It was like going back in town, like Small Town, Mayberry, we all knew each other. And my husband and I are servants at heart. I mean, that's what we do. He works at the fire department. We help our neighbors out. Most of the community wants us to stay on our street, and then we're only able to do that with help from others in the community. So we're very close-knit on our street. Whether or not I'm chosen to serve on council, and I hope I am, but whether or not we're going to continue to do these things in our community. So, and you've got a lot of, you know, a lot of good applicants here. I did serve on committee before, and Bob actually reached out to me and said, hey, you know, there's this, there's this opportunity. I'd like for you to serve on this committee. And I said, well, Bob, I'm busy. I don't know, you think I'm going to regret this? And he actually said, most definitely, I think you will, but I think that you'll be, I think you'll be good. And so I didn't regret it. I do deserve serving, enjoy serving my community. So if given that opportunity, I'd like to show you my commitment. And that's, I do understand, I'm a busy mom. I work full-time, but when things matter to you, you make the time. That's it?
That it?
That is. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nita Dillon. And our last applicant is, is Mr. Molina. If you could come forward, sir, and give your name and address for the record.
Hello, Daniel Molina, eight-zero-zero-eight West Sixty-Fourth Street.
Thank you, sir. Okay, first question, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city in the next two years?
Well, first, let me say, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. And in regard to your question, you know, to echo the sentiments of Ruben, I think one of, if not the most important facing, issue facing our city for the next two years is the flood mitigation work downtown. First and foremost, to protect people and property in the area, obviously. You know, the natural disasters of the year, I think, have been a wake-up call of sorts that we don't really have the luxury of time anymore to make our communities more resilient. So that should be first, first priority. But focusing on downtown is also important for other reasons, namely that the future vibrancy and growth of our city depends on it. Our neighbors to the east, west, and south can serve as great examples of that, because when you invest in your downtown and when you place a premium on placemaking, people want to be a part of that. And it can really anchor a community for generations.
Okay, thanks, sir. Next question is, what skills or talents would you bring to the city council?
Well, speaking of downtown, I think it was early last year when I stood here before you to voice my support for a more people-friendly Merriam Drive. And if you may recall, tensions ran a little high that night. And I think it's in moments like those when you start to realize that there's two, really two keys to every issue. There's the technical key, and then there's the relational key. And my career and my extracurriculars to this point have really just blended those two qualities together in a unique way. My day jobs have required me to dive deep into complex technical topics like architecture and investing. So I break those down into easy-to-digest bits that are easy to understand for all. But I've also placed an equal amount of energy on the relational side of things and in building bridges with stakeholders of all stripes. And I do that not only in the community I call home, but in the organizations that I've worked at, such as the Johnson County Library System. And I believe it was, man, nearly a decade ago, when, working directly with library and county leadership, we made the successful case for investing millions more in our libraries. And that's an investment, I'm proud to say, that is paying dividends for us just down the road. So it's, it's that unique combination of those two skills, the, the technical and the relational, that I think I'd bring to this council. And it's a, it's a pairing that I think is going to be crucial in the months and years to come as downtown's future unfolds.
Thank you, sir. And the final question this evening is, do you have any closing comments for the city council to consider?
Yeah. You know, similar to Billy's sentiment, listening to my fellow Ward Four neighbors here tonight, I hear a good mix of experiences, but a similar kind of conviction in all of our voices. And, you know, that, it sounds a little corny, but that kind of fills me with optimism about the future of our city. We were just talking earlier about, you know, sometimes there's, there's one candidate, but to have a whole handful is pretty uplifting. So, you know, I guess I'll just close with a simple thank you for your consideration tonight and a promise to stay engaged regardless of tonight's outcome.
Thank you, Mr. Molina. Appreciate it. Okay, well, those are the five applicants that we have that are vying for the position of Ward Four council person. And I, I would just echo the sentiments that have been said this evening, is that we have five excellent candidates and that all of you would be a great asset to be, to sit here on, you know, with us on the city council, to help direct the city forward. I, I hope that, as Mr. Molina said, that you all stay involved, whoever ends up being selected this evening, that, that doesn't preclude the other four individuals from still assisting the city in some capacity, in either in a committee or a commission. We have lots of ways to serve in Merriam, not just on the city council, so. Do I want to, at this point, turn it over to, who gets to take it from here? Mr. Strangle?
Thank you, Mayor. The next step of the process is spelled out in city code in section two-point-twenty-seven, which is the vote process. You've had the interview, and we will next follow the process for two votes. So the first vote, you will receive a ballot from the city clerk that has five names on it. You will vote for two individuals on that list. The mayor will vote in case of a tie, but only in case of a tie. So again, the first round will have five names on it. You will vote for two. The two, the two leading vote-getters will move to the next round, and you will vote for one. You will get a second ballot for that. Again, the mayor will only vote in case of a tie. So we will go ahead and hand these out.
Three. Yeah, there's four.
So please place your name on the top of it.
I don't envy any of you for having to pick two names.
Okay, we do have our results here. The two candidates that will be moving on to the second round with five votes each will be Ruben Cozmeier and Nita Dillon. So those will be our two candidates. And the next ballot, you will select one. Okay, the results are in. With six votes, the winning candidate was Ruben Cozmeier. So he is your next Ward Four representative. And if he wants to come on up, we will swear him in and make him get to work.
Yeah. Round of applause.
She wants a photo. They all want a photo.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ruben Cozmeier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Kansas.
Of the state of Kansas.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Marion.
Of the city of Marion.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of council member.
Discharge the duties of council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, congratulations, Mr. Cozmeier. I will also add though, now that that has, he has been selected for the council, is that now he has created a vacancy on our planning commission. And I will be looking to add two positions to that commission here. So any of you other four that, this evening, that have come forward and volunteered to be on the council, I could sure use you to come forward and be on the planning commission as well, so. But I appreciate all the excitement that we heard this evening and all of you were highly qualified and look forward to, you know, continuing you working with the city for many years to come, so. But that being said, I guess we'll probably ready to move on to the next item. I'm ready, Ms. Ingel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item on the agenda is consider an agreement with Overland Fire Protection Services. As background for this item, we are reaching the end of our first 10-year term of an agreement with Overland Park to provide fire service for the city of Marion. As a reminder, or for the first time, starting about 10, 11 years ago, we had some conversations with Overland Park about their struggles to provide equal services throughout their community, specifically the ALS, Advanced Life Support Model of Fire Response, which essentially recognizes the reality of the nature of calls these days are about 80% medical versus fire. And as opposed to showing up at calls with a pumper truck and ladder truck and all of the sirens that go along with that, which again are very important when needed, it's sometimes more appropriate to show up with an SUV and a fire medic that can administer medicine, life-saving medicine, more importantly. And they were unable to provide that uniformly across their whole community. We were also experiencing some issues in terms of, I don't know, some brain drain where we would have some people that would come in. They would start out in our organization. Because of the size of our organization, their desire to want to be able to advance or to train in specialized type areas, they would end up migrating to other organizations just because of those opportunities that didn't exist. We didn't have the ability to do some of those training things in our community. And so we started a conversation over 10 years ago with Overland Park about the ability to merge the two departments together to make it so that out of our fire station, they could provide fire service for Marion, but also North Overland Park. And it's only recently, and I just verified this with chief because I oddly enough saw the prior chief this morning and told him what we're doing tonight. It's only been recently that Overland Park Fire has been able to administer fire service to all of Overland Park in the last couple of years because it's, they just haven't had the stations. It hasn't made sense to do that. So they've even had to contract. So one of the big things that they got out of this was the ability to provide service to the north area. One of the things we got out of it was the enhanced training. We eliminated a lot of turnover in that. People, good firefighters that are in our station can stay in our station, whether they're Overland Park, OPFD, or Marion. They're ours. They're folks that know our community and quite, quite a few of them actually were Marion Fire Department veterans. So we, believing that the last 10 years has been a fantastic merger, that it's worked well for the enhancement of both of our cities and our residents. We have negotiated a new contract, which the city attorneys of both organizations have looked at. I've looked at it. Some of our staff has looked at it. The chief has looked at it also. All of the terms of it primarily have stayed the same. The two keys that I just want to call out that have changed, two key components that have changed is the contract term. It's supposed to be in 10 years, it's now 20 years. We felt that with the out clauses that exist in there and how the 10 years has been actually pretty fast, but also pretty successful, that the 20-year term makes a lot of sense. So we are recommending a contract with a 20-year term. And then also, we have added the cost of maintaining a battalion chief, or one-third of the cost of maintaining a battalion chief, somewhere close, primarily at the station on 95th Street, but they might migrate and move around. But we have accepted the cost of that per the agreement, should the council accept it. Other than that, all of the terms stay primarily the same. We will continue to provide a facilities superintendent to take care of our station because we maintain all of the equipment. Those trucks are ours. The building is ours. The equipment in it's ours. So if we ever needed to extract ourselves from this agreement, all we need is the people. So we have a facility superintendent that we will continue to make available to the fire department, as well as a city mechanic to help coordinate the repairs on the truck. Anybody that was recently at our Pink Neak Week will have seen the fire truck that was in there. That's actually the second fire truck that was in there in the last two weeks that Ross maintains for our fire service. In addition, Overland Park agrees to provide fire chief, deputy fire chief services, all the subordinates that make all that operational administrative occur behind the scene. In addition, fire chief, as he is this evening, attends all of our meetings. He attends our department head meetings. Makes me feel very informed and involved when need be in terms of things that happened at our station. And oddly, I shouldn't say oddly, I was honored to have been invited, which was not part of our agreement, by the leadership team at Overland Park to be part of the selection of the new chief when Chief Dean retired. So we were given an opportunity to be at the table and voice our preference, our thoughts, our concerns, which are none, for who should be leading that department. And happy to say that it's been Chief Long. Past that, I don't have much to add to that. Mayor may have some comments on that, just simply because he was here 10 years ago when we did this. But other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Chief Long is here to answer any questions you may have about it. We enthusiastically support the ratification of this contract.
And I would just comment that it was brilliant. I don't know where the chiefs were at the time when they come up.
That's what I was looking for. That's all right. Very good.
Okay, maybe not. But it has worked out very well. And I will say, in the beginning, not only myself, but also my firefighters and officers, were concerned that we might be treated as stepchildren when they moved over into Overland Park. And they were, they were not. I mean, in the sense of not that stepchildren are treated differently, but that probably came out wrong. I'll probably hear about that. But the fact was, is that they were embraced and worked well with in the system. Some have moved on to other stations and it has just really been phenomenal as to how that they have taken over our services. And I would concur with Mr. Ingel that, and recommend, from the council standpoint, that we continue this contract, but my two cents worth. Did you have anything, chief, that you need, you wanted to say or give you that opportunity if you want to say a few words? I didn't want to put you on the spot, but.
No, absolutely. So no, I would just echo everything that assistant, or city administrator Ingel. You know, I've been a part of this. I worked with Chief Pape. I was a B C at the time when this transition happened. I think it was beneficial for obviously both organizations, but I would just like to extend a thank you to city staff. I think we did some informational sessions with the council in Overland Park and I think they were surprised to hear how involved we are here with city staff. And basically, we work with the city staff here, just like we work with the city staff in Overland Park. This is your fire department. You do have a say in it. So we take that seriously when it comes to budget, equipment replacement and personnel. Like Chief Pape at the time said, many of the personnel that came over in the transmission are officers for us now. So you have one officer upstairs that's a captain now that came over as a lieutenant. We have other officers that came over with the transition and now work as acting B Cs for us. So they really have integrated into our department. So we're thankful for those individuals and they help us be successful. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for chief? Okay.
I have a question, but not for, I don't know who it's for.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure, since we're adding on the one-third of a battalion chief, that that's in our 2025 budget starting up? You anticipated that?
It is. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. And I also was here and it was just an amazing partnership and it felt like the transition was just so smooth from where I'm sitting. So I'm glad to extend.
Any other questions for Mr. Ingel or for chief? Okay. Thank you, Chief Long. Well, I would entertain a motion then. At this point, if you think that this is worthy to move forward with this contract, we would like to make that motion. Ms. Hands?
Yes, I'd love to. I move that the council approve a contract with the city of Overland Park to provide the fire protection services in the city of Marion.
A motion? Do I hear a second? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Shadish.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like next item up is consider a bid award to Schutz. We got Director Comkey here at the podium. I'll let you take it from here.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, one of our city and city council goals is to replace all of our street light that are, consist of Cobra heads to LED residential standard streetlights. And Public Works used to be able to do all that work, but unfortunately, we haven't been able to rent a bore rig, as you've heard at a couple of meetings before. And so in order to complete that goal, we need to subcontract that work out. So this project includes three locations that are shown in your package to install a streetlight conduit. And once that's completed, we will have upgraded all of our residential streetlights to the LED residential style streetlights. And then we'll continue to work on installing the LED retrofit kits to all the streetlights, which we're in the process of doing right now. So we did prepare a bid in September and we received three bids in October 14th when we opened the bids. And Sheets Construction LLC was a low bidder in the amount of $140,000. And they did do work on installing conduit for our C D B G project. They did a great job and so we're real excited and I would recommend approval of this bid.
Any questions for Director Comkey? I see no questions. I would entertain a motion for that. Go ahead, Ms. Shadish.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve of a contract, approve a contract with Schutz Construction LLC for the 2024 streetlight conduit project in the amount of $140,000.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, a second, a motion.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like next item up is the, consider the purchase of Wavtronics. And you're still standing there, so I'll let you take it from here.
The 2024 C I P includes funds to replace traffic signal equipment as part of the traffic signal program project. And we are recommending replacement of detection systems at four intersections, including Johnson Drive and Antioch, and then the three intersections to the north that serve the Town Center Mall. The detection at these intersections is over 10 years old. It's smart micro technology. It's currently obsolete and no longer supported by the manufacturer. So over time, reliability has decreased and it's requiring more staff responses for repairs. We're recommending replacing this with Wavtronics. We currently use that at six of our intersections. It is very effective. It's supported by the manufacturer. It's widely used in the metro area, has a lot of features that we're working on. We can hook up a laptop and pull off traffic counts and things like that. So we feel like this would be really beneficial to go to these, this detection at these intersections. And it will also allow us to have more of an inventory that we can keep. And then as long as we have more Wavtronics, we'll have more inventory to be able to go ahead and replace those. So I would recommend a purchase of Wavtronics at the four intersections in the amount of $76,299. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, any que, go ahead. No, no questions, okay. Before, before we go, Ms. Chaveta, do you have a question?
I have a quick question, sorry. So this, like it detects cars and changes the, and helps change the signal? Or can you explain what it does? I'm sorry.
Yes, so there's a lot of detection. There's the loops in the pavement that pick up the cars and then it informs the controller to start the green cycle. So this is radar that sets up on top of the mast arms. It detects the cars coming and then it goes into green mode.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
And then remind me, we talked about replacing the one at Johnson Drive and Heeaway, right? Like in the future?
And we did do that already.
Perfect, I thought so.
Yes. And hopefully, I mean, we haven't had any calls. I think it's functioning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question in reference to, I know this is a part of the detection process itself. Does this have any way as part of the system of, as we have taken on intersections and we've added a flashing yellow left turn light? Is this part of that system? Or are we adding any of that to these four? Or are we adding any of that to these four locations?
No, that would be separate, but we could do that. I don't know if those are flashing yellow there.
I don't either.
Okay, I need to check and see. I know some of them are, so.
We've been looking at those and putting maybe one in the budget here or something for.
I'll take a look at those and get back with you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Director Comkey?
Okay.
I've got one question. So it looks like, I live next to that Johnson Drive and Antioch one. I ride my bike through there, and I've had no problems on the current system. I assume these are just going to work better, right, for, you know, bicycles and motorcycles and all that?
Yes, it should be more reliable, and we don't have to go out. You know, as these, the big fear is, since it's not, they don't service them anymore. If they went out completely, we'd have to rush out and get a new system. So that's what we're trying to do.
Any question, Mr. Cozmeier? Okay, any other questions? Seeing no other questions, I would entertain a motion. Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the purchase of WaveTronics detective, detection systems for four intersections in the city of Marion in the amount of $76,299.
Thank you, Ms. Shadrich. Okay, Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like the next item up is a monthly finance report. Or we just give a quick overview? We are, this is our September finance report, which covers July revenues. So through the month of July, we're approximately $410,000 ahead of budget in terms of revenues. And we're about $2 million under on expenditures, so we're in a good place to be. The sales tax is driven primarily from, we're about 2.5% higher than we were last year, and that's driven primarily by automobiles, surprise. We're about 3% over where we were last year, although we're under on Marion Town Center retail. We are up on all other retail. So we are in a, we're in a good financial place, at least through the month of July. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Any question for Mr. Engel? Okay, this is like good news. Thank you, Mr. Engel. Next item up would be a community development update. Actually, we've got Director Dyer at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. First thing I'd like to update you on is that the planning commission will be considering what you all sent to them on accessory dwelling units. So they will be starting to work on, putting together an ordinance to come to you all for your consideration in upcoming months. Also, just a quick update on Marion Grand Station, it continues to be on time. If not, a little bit ahead of schedule, they continue to make excellent progress over there. And then the last thing I have is, as one grant season winds down, another one gets going. So we are working right now on revising all the applications for the 2025 grant season. And we'll hope to get those up online here in the next month, because the January 2nd will be the time that folks can start submitting applications for our Residential and Sustainability Program. So if anybody out there has projects they plan to do on their home in 2025, please keep an eye on our website and submit an application for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
Did everyone who put in an application for a grant receive it this year? Or are there some carryovers?
There are, do not believe there will be carryovers, but we will, kind of as we get ready to wrap that up, we'll be able to give a better idea of that. So we do have a couple of projects that folks are trying to get done. So hoping that, I don't think we'll have any carryovers, hopefully not.
Any other questions, Director Dyer? Okay, see no other questions, thank you. Okay, looks like the next item up is single trash hauler update.
Good evening, Caitlin Gard, Assistant City Administrator. In an effort to be as transparent as possible in this whole process, we wanted to make sure that you all are updated on any of the steps that we had taken since the last time we met in regards to our single hauler, trash recycling, and yard waste initiative. This is the same timeline slide that I showed you all last time. The timeline hasn't changed as of right now. But if you recall, at the last council meeting, you all adopted the resolution of intent to continue with this process, actually to initiate the process. That was the very first step that you all needed to complete. From there, we've developed a work group of residents. We also have a representative of the Johnson County Department of Health and Environment on the work group as well. We met for the very first time last week. It was relatively successful. We started discussing what an organized collection plan would look like. We didn't have any decision points made at that meeting, but we hopefully will at the next meeting to develop that plan to bring forward to you all, hopefully at the last meeting in November, so you can review it before that December 9th public hearing. That public hearing is required by state statute. The public hearing and the vote will occur on the same evening. So we want to do to all, to be able to review the draft document well in advance, just in case you all have any questions or want to make any changes to it. With that being said, we are continuing our communications on the topic. We want, since this will impact so many of our residents, we wanted to make sure that everybody felt as informed as possible. Again, we have marion.org backslash trash service, sorry, that's hard to say, on our website, that still has that form available for our residents to fill out if they'd like to. Any feedback will be shared with the work group and the governing body. It's, for the second time, going to be in our Highlights Magazine. That Highlights Magazine will come out around Thanksgiving, so everybody will have the opportunity to, again, see it before that December 9th public hearing. The work group had a good idea to do a direct mailer to our residents, just because this is such a big initiative. So we're working on that before the December 9th council meeting as well. And then obviously, all of our social media posts, Nextdoor, Facebook, all of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So anyone have any questions for Ms. Gardner? Okay.
Thank you.
Very daunting assignment you have going there, but I know you're up to the, you're up to the task. Thank you. Okay. Well, let's see, do you have any informational items, Mr. Engel, at this point?
I do not, but I'm happy to answer any questions, council may have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Engel? Okay, I see no questions for Mr. Engel. I would just like to publicly acknowledge that Ms. Chaveta now has a cohort to help her out, but we thank you for filling, filling two roles instead that we had that empty seat. So, thank you, Ms. Chaveta. I do understand we do have an executive session this evening, and you would like to have how many minutes?
We'll do 45.
45 minutes, okay. I would entertain a motion for the executive session, for 45-minute stint.
Okay. I'm thinking that means 9:05? Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, please, please do, Ms. Hands.
I move that the governing body recess into executive session for preliminary discussion relating to property acquisition pursuant to KSA 7543-19B6, which allows the governing body to hold an executive session for preliminary discussion of property acquisition. Present will be the governing body, city attorney, city administrator, assistant city administrator, and community development director. The meeting will reconvene in the council chambers at 9:05.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion, do I have a second? Go ahead, Ms. Shadrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Do we have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
And before we take off and move to our other location, I would just like to thank again all the applicants that have put in for the position this evening. All of you were well-qualified, and I look forward to seeing your name come before me on planning commission, because we're going to need to fill a couple of positions there. So for everybody's information, we're going to go into executive session, and when we come back out, we're going to adjourn. So if any of you would like to leave while we're gone, feel free to do so, because there will be no more council meeting after this.
No more motions.
Yeah, okay. Well, it looks like we are all here and in time, according to the clock. I would entertain a motion this evening. Go ahead, Ms. Shadrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
And I'll second that.
And Ms. Hands second, okay. Madam Clerk?
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned.